Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Reed?
Present.
Member Satterwhite?
Present.
Okay, so for, we have two things on our agenda tonight. First is the admissions policy for the Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy. And Dr. Gardner, I believe you're gonna make a little presentation for us about that?
Hello?
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Alright, so I'll open by saying that, based on our experience over the last couple of years, we wanted to codify something for the policy subcommittee regarding Frederick Douglass. We have held lotteries in the past two years, and we have had some experiences that lead us to say we need to create a policy. So, what we did was, we formed a committee, and within the committee was represented departments in LPS such as special ed and MLE, and also leadership from the school. The principal was invited to the committee. And the committee came up with some things they would like to see in the policy, and then we had this reviewed by our lawyer, Katie Manault, and now we're presenting it to you. I can read through it, so it is open to all eligible in public school students in grades nine to 12. The lottery forms made available to all students must be completed on or before February 15th in order to be considered for the following year. For next year, there are 88 spots available in the freshman class at FDCA. If there are more applicants than available spots, a lottery will be held to determine who will be accepted. Some students will be prioritized in the lottery. Students attending Thurgood Marshall Middle School in order to offset overcrowding at Lynn English High School. So we have done that for the past two years, and we did not do, we did our priority recruiting at Thurgood Marshall, and we only really did kind of like mass communications to the other middle schools. And it was, we had stated to the committee for a couple of years in a row that it was to address the overcrowding at Lynn English. So however, given our recruiting summer melt over the summer, we realized we needed to make a much broader recruiting effort, and so the same types of recruiting efforts were made at the middle, at each middle school. And we did have a much better turnout for the lottery, for the lottery. So we want to maintain that we do some prioritizing of Thurgood Marshall students to not lose that offset for English High School. And then, we've also encountered some situations where it would have been easier for some families if we could have had a sibling preference. So we wanted to put that forward for your consideration. So once the lottery is complete, students who are chosen will then complete two separate applications. An application for FDCA and a second application for NSCC. As part of the application process, students will be asked to submit an artifact and a writing sample. Prior to admission, all students must take the Accuplacer test at North Shore Community College and participate in an interview with FDCA. To give you a little bit of background for that, all ninth grade students take the Accuplacer that are in early college throughout the whole district. So that's not anything special to FDCA. Nobody, no students were excluded from FDCA based on the Accuplacer in the past two years. And if a student's scores were a little below the cutoff that they wanted, they gave students time to do a writing sample. So that's why the writing sample is there, because it's part of the North Shore application. So I wanted to share that with you. The committee presented the idea of an artifact similar to what LVTI uses, so that students could, if, to the FDCA admissions part of the process, that is where that would be used, and that would give students different ways to show their desire to be at Frederick Douglass. So it wouldn't just be a writing sample option. You know, they could create a slideshow of pictures, create a PowerPoint, create a brief video, those types of options for them. Okay. And then we're requesting an interview simply because we want to solidify with students and families that they are actually coming to Frederick Douglass. We want them to come in and visit the school and meet the principal. And also want to have a chance to explain what the commitment is to Frederick Douglass and what it is really gonna entail to be at Frederick Douglass. Because the early college classes escalate as you move along. We're going for that associate's degree, so we really want students and families to understand what that whole, you know, it's a very supported process from ninth to 10th grade to 11th grade, and it's a gradual release, but we want them to know. And we're proposing a team of educators who will work together to review applications and evaluate relevant information to determine prospective student eligibility. And we haven't put our acceptance date out. We have run our lottery, we have 128 applicants for 88 seats, so our recruitment was successful. And now we're just proposing this to see, you know, what we are able to do in our application and process. Can I answer any questions for you?
Thank you, Dr. Gardner. Are there any questions of the committee?
I just wanna voice that there's a correction on the admissions. It's actually for 24, 25 school year.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, thank you.
This is moving forward.
Yep, yep, thank you. Yep, okay. Sean, can I pass the gavel to you, 'cause I want to, yeah, that's a question. You have to actually, yeah. Uh, Member Gailey?
Good evening, Jim. Dr. Gardner, I'm just confused about the available spots. Why is there only 88 here? We're like, I believe that it was 100?
This has to do with actually the North Shore contracts. So the North Shore contracts have limited seating caps. So most of those caps are 22. The class sizes are also small, so North Shore did try to work on negotiations to make something special happen for class caps for this school, but it hasn't been able to happen yet.
Member Dugan?
Thank you. Dr. Gardner, so this is just a technicality, the February 15th date, I know that that's fairly close to February vacation, again, just kind of my strange brain. Would it make more sense to just maybe do the Friday before February break? Is that 15th, does it kind of fall maybe sometimes on the break or sometimes on that? I don't know. Kind of an odd request, but just for me, would it, just a little more?
It wouldn't fall on the-
Does that ever fall on the break, or?
No, because it's always, the break comes President's Day, and it's the third Monday of February.
Okay, alright, thank you. You think I'd know that, but, yeah. That's one I wait for, but alright, thank you.
Just those small tidbits I learned in history.
Yes. Right, thank you, alright, thank you.
I think the honor before language would also give us some flexibility.
Okay, oh, right, thank you, okay. Thank you, thank you for the clarity.
Any other questions or comments? Do I need a motion from someone from the policy subcommittee?
I make a motion to accept this policy. Oh, sorry, move it to the full committee. I make a motion to move this policy to the full committee.
As amended.
As amended.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Satterwhite?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Dr. Gardner, that was great, thank you. Alright, and then we have one other thing on our policy subcommittee agenda, and that is our graduation requirements, so that's policy IKF. So this is something we tabled as part of section I, and we tabled it to come before the full committee, 'cause that's something we thought the full committee should be aware of. And I know Doc, excuse me, Attorney Gallo, and I think, yes, we, yes, I know, I'm sorry, but we're here to help us with the graduation, yes. Molly Cohen is here to help us with the graduation. It's been a long day, I apologize, Molly. She's here to help us with the graduation requirement, so, take it away, now that I'm completely embarrassed.
Alright, good evening, members of the administration, superintendent, mayor, Madam Vice Chair, members of the committee and subcommittee, and of course, subcommittee chairperson Dugan, for the record, Charlie Gallo, compliance officer for the Lynn Public Schools, my pleasure to be here with-
You've forgotten me too?
No.
Molly Cohen, interim executive director of curriculum, soon to transition to deputy superintendent, thank you.
Thank you for having us tonight. In your policy, or in your committee packets, you had a proposed graduation policy IKF. You'll notice I'm not coming before you tonight with a grand presentation with a PowerPoint. This is not one of those policies, so perhaps a reprieve for Chairperson Dugan, who's been through that a couple of times, and subcommittee members Reed and Satterwhite, I'll be back in the future with one of those, I'm sure. But for tonight, one person who looked at this said to me a short time ago, this is really just common sense, and so that's why you have the presentation and the form you do. MASC put forward in November a proposed policy IKF. We thank the subcommittee for putting that on pause so that the curriculum team and the guidance counselors in our schools could look more closely at it. That has since occurred, and so our process, what was first to look at that MASC model policy, next to look at similar districts and neighboring districts, Brockton, Lowell Revere, Swampscut, Lynnfield, and then some working group meetings involving Ms. Cohen, myself, all of the curriculum assistant directors, assistant director of compliance, Lauren Walsh, and Ms. Jewels was there to represent the school committee. Special shout out to all the guidance counselors from all the high schools, and especially Lynn Tech, because we want to be sure that we're putting forth graduation policies that are also inclusive with regard to career invoke students. Big picture, MASC Core is the state recommended framework, the state recommended course of study. This proposed draft aligns to the rigor of MASC Core. It aligns more to the MASC model than the current LPS policy. It aligns more to neighboring district, and it codifies what the actual practice is in the Lynn Public Schools. This is an old policy, we're not, we're really more following MASC Core anyway, so this is the common sense that brings us up to date and the rigor that is recommended by the state. That's big picture, and I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Cohen to take you through the policy with more detail.
Thank you, Charlie. I'd like to thank Charlie and his team, he's always a pleasure to work with, and, you know, very, he does the deep research to make sure that we are being equitable in our, in our policies and our procedures. So just, you'll note there are just a few changes. One of the pieces that we wanted to make sure we were doing was to modernize the language, so some of the language in the old graduation policy was out of date. We no longer refer to foreign language, it's world language, it has world language standards. We want to make sure that we're representing the actual work that's happening in our schools. In terms of rigor, there are two areas specifically in the sheet that we're, in the sheet in front of you, and that is around art and math. So we are increasing math from three years to four years. And our belief system there is that math is fundamental to all life skills in all areas of our lives, career, or college, and beyond. So that's really important to us. I do want to say there's a note there, though, that we understand for the students who are sitting in the high schools now, that they didn't have that in mind when they were planning, right, their graduation plans. And so that will be in effect in the class of 2026. So the students in 11th and 12th grade now, this will not apply to, but it will apply for all classes after 2026. We've also increased art. We really want to elevate all sides of the curriculum, you know, all parts of our brain, and so that's why we've elevated art to have one year during the four years in high school, four or five years. And so then, the other piece that I really want to talk about a little bit is how inclusive this policy is. This entire revamping that Charlie and you and MASC have been going through is around separating policy from procedure. And so one of those pieces is in the prior policy, we had the 25 credits per year that you needed to be promoted, and it was set in policy. That really limited our ability to be able to meet the needs of very diverse students. And so when we talk about the alternative pathways work that we did last year that we're continuing to do this year, that idea of being really creative in student progression models for different students who have different needs and different life circumstances, well, this will no longer limit us, because we can do multiple different ways of getting the credit or the coursework that students need for their particular pathway. And so that's also why we lowered the world language requirement, which previously was three years, but we've lowered it to two, because to the point we talked about last time with the progression, excuse me, the program of studies, and elevating vocational studies, elevating different types of pathways for students. The three-year specific, I'm gonna refer to it as foreign language, 'cause that's what it was then, was very limiting to a narrow-minded movement towards college only. That's what, that is for college requirement, and we're trying to expand what you have opportunity to do. And as you know, that is not at all to say we're diminishing world language, 'cause you know, in the Lynn Public Schools, we ultra, accentuate our strength as a multilingual community with the biliteracy, the seal of biliteracy, the stamp test, increasing AP in world language. So I just don't want the message to be lost that we definitely see the value in world language, absolutely, right? But we just don't want it to limit other courses for students who are expanding maybe beyond college. I think that is pretty much the main, those are, I think, the main takeaways for us. And I do want to thank, as Charlie did, the guidance counselors, the assistant directors in curriculum, who have, we talked about this, we talked about equity, we talked about ensuring that students have pathways. And so that work will live in the student progression model, as opposed to 25 credits per year in the policy.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen, Attorney Gallo. Any questions? Yes, Member Reed?
I think this one's for you, Molly. Regarding the new four years of mathematics, so is this gonna be additional courses or require more of the same courses? Like, do we have to have another Algebra II class, something like that, or is, logistically, how does it work?
Yeah, no, 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 this is, we, well, we're gonna be presenting to you the program of studies that is expanding math courses already. But this is also getting sort of ahead of the financial literacy pathway that has really expanded and blown up across the nation in a good way. And so it's just ensuring that our students have the four years of math, but right now, when it's the way that it was previously, some students might only take three classes.
Gotcha, gotcha, makes sense, thank you.
So you know further questions, motion?
I make a motion to put this policy to the full committee.
Oh, I'm sorry. Member Penney?
Sorry. Where students enrolled in Lynn Tech, and they may opt out from world language, can you elaborate more on that? And it's MASC Core?
Yeah, do you want?
Absolutely. So the world language requirement, and again, as Ms. Cohen said, is something that we embrace here with the dual language program and the other examples that Molly mentioned, but MASC Core recommends two units, two years of world language, and I actually have the printout and can give to Ms. Jewels for folks, but also says that students who are in an approved vogue program can opt out, with the rationale being they're going to perhaps use that time for more career or vocational type training. Doesn't mean they have to, this is about minimums and about flexibility. And I will note that we looked at five other districts, and most of them actually have a less rigorous world language requirement than we're putting forward tonight. Several of them don't have any world language requirement at all. So we're still holding to a certain level of rigor, but again, aligning to MASC Core.
Can I speak to this? So when we talk about rigor, we want to remember we're not only talking about academic rigor, we're talking about the vocational pathways where they have internships, you know, apprenticeships, those are the hours, and they have to meet a certain number of hours in order to get certified in their OSHA training and everything, and so it's just competing with hours in the day for students. But, so I just don't want to misrepresent that rigor lives in all areas, especially vocation.
Okay, so there was a motion to put this, oh, Member Castellanos, did you? Oh, okay. So just need a second from a policy subcommittee member? Can we get a second? Yep. Yes, thank you, okay. Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Satterwhite?
Yes.
Okay, and so that's all on the agenda for the policies of committee, so just a motion to adjourn. Second.
Thank you.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, adjourn.
Who is it? Who is it?
It goes to the mayor now, yeah. Yeah. How are you? Nice to see you again.
Alright, we're gonna start open mic. The open mic session is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views on matters of concern in the school committee. The sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation in three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit, thank you. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least 18 years of age or enrolled in high school in a Lynn Public Schools district, and have been discussed their views with a student government representative. The chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if he or she feels that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or a member of school administration in attendance, that member, through the chair, may address the individual. The sessions will promptly commence 15 minutes prior to the start of the regular school committee meeting. And sign up, we have Paul Malo. If you could state your name and address, please.
I'm also over 18 and in high school, so. Paul Malo, it's 16 Normandy Road in Lynn. I teach at Lynn English High School, and this is my 31st year of doing that. I did spend 12 at Thurgood Marshall before 19 at Lynn English. I'm here tonight because the staff at Lynn English, pretty much the entire faculty, from all the people that I talked to, and many are excited that I'm here tonight, because we filled out survey after survey after survey after survey of how we felt, how we felt, how we felt, and how we felt. And many of us think that, yep, you've read it, there are numbers on paper, and most of us feel that very little or nothing is being done to address our needs. We are your employees, the city of Lynn, excuse me, yet our schedule as it's currently set, okay, and believe me, I understand contracts. If it has anything to do with the satellite program, there's contract, I get it. However, it's a grind on a majority of the staff that's there already. Just to list a couple examples, from my own personal experiences, two days this year, three days last year, from 7:45 to 2:30, I was with students, with the exception of my 30-minute, half-hour lunch, but since there's no passing time involved in the school day, I spent part of my lunch getting children to move along in the hallways. I don't think that's right, I don't think that's fair, it's mentally exhausting. So some people say, well, you have an admin that day. Well, let me just give you a couple examples of some of the more high-intensity admins, one of which I had last year. Bathroom duty, where we assign kids on in and out of the bathroom. Now mine was 90 minutes long, two days a week last year, in one 60-minute period, and it's a constant flow of children with no breath in between to even like, get up, do anything, and monitor the bathroom at the same time. It's just a grind, and we did that three times a week. Now if you have calf duty, you have 90 minutes of that on top of the rest of the day that you're in class, where you're monitoring 600, 700 students, making sure they're going through the lines, et cetera, et cetera. It's exhausting. I like calf duty, but I don't think I could do it too, and if what I saw coming up for next year, one of the blocks is three times a week with that, I don't think it's, it's just mentally exhausting, okay? We also have the new, and I know it's state mandated, but the advisory prep program for the half hour this year. The homeroom teachers have to plan for that, and not the, and not the person assigned with them, and sometimes depending upon whether there's an emergency or something with some of the ancillary staff, like a social worker, whatever, they don't always get there. My social worker sidekick was not there yesterday. I did hear from her, she had an issue, but there I am. And then if you're one of the lucky people that have one of the lesser admins, and there's people out on a certain day, you could wind up covering classes for days and days on end on top of your own schedule, okay? Your schedule is grinding us to dust, period. So I just ask everyone here, if you can please find a way to incorporate some sort of break during the day where the teachers can take a breath, maybe use the facilities, and, you know, at the end of the day, may still have some energy to run their extracurricular programs. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at open mic? Please, if you state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Chavarria, and I live at 20 Heath's Court here in Lynn. Good evening, school committee members. I recently wrote a pretty lengthy email about some concerns I have with clerical errors on attendance and grading, as well as attendance policies. I'm here today to address the issues and how we can find a solution. Before I do so, I just want to say that all the teachers, guidance counselors I've communicated with over the years have been nothing short of amazing, and I truly appreciate each and every one of them. My main concern and reason for being here today is the new pilot in-class attendance program that was implemented by the district. To be clear, this is separate from the normal attendance policy, where if a child is absent more than four unexcused absences in a quarter, they get D minuses in all classes. Before grades closed last quarter, I confirmed the grades my son would receive for each class. He was on track to be on honor roll. When grades came out, he got a D minus in English. I immediately reached out to the teacher to confirm it was a mistake. He confirmed it was an error, so I reached out to the guidance counselor, and she explained to me that there was a new pilot attendance policy that states, if a student is marked absent in one of their classes within a quarter, the grade in the class will be an automatic D minus. My son currently attends Lynn Tech, and for his last class of the day, which is English, he has to go from the annexed building to the main building, up a flight of stairs to the opposite side of the building. My son has never laid to any of his classes, but had trouble making it on time to this one class, where it was located from his previous class. The English teacher said that once the bell rings and the student is not in the class, they are marked absent, but as soon as they walked in, he changes it to a tardy. I want the committee to understand that my son works very hard to achieve honor roll every quarter. He stays after school, after school, excuse me, hours at a time after school and earned a B in English. We never saw the D minus, when he ever saw the D minus, he was understandably upset. We are basically giving our kids an F for being late. Again, my son was not absent and did not miss any classes. We are setting our kids up to failure, for failure if we do this. We are diminishing their motivation to do well, and I ask that this policy be revisited as it's very discouraging. I would like the committee to take into consideration that sometimes teachers don't dismiss students right as the bell, at the bell ring, and as a result, takes away time from the student to get to the next class. Or maybe we're just not allowing enough time for the kids to get from one building to another. The guidance counselor has since reverted my son's grade to a B, but has had to correct 296 other freshman grades. This is not a very resourceful use of her time, in my opinion. I know open mic has limited time for parents to speak, so I wanted to address my main concern, but there have been numerous occasions where there have been clerical errors on attendance and grades, which I detailed in my original email to the committee and attached emails as proof. We are human, and we're bound to make mistakes, but there is some sort of check system that- we have to ensure that this doesn't happen. You have parents that might not know how to check grades online, don't speak English and understand. This can affect our students' chances for future opportunities. In my son's case, he wanted to attend Lynn Tech, so grades and attendance were everything, especially to get into the shop that he wanted. Thank you for your time, and please let me know if there's anything I can do as a parent to help us get a solution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak at open mic? Anyone else for open mic? Last call for open mic. All right, we will now call to order the fourth regular meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Member Peña?
Present.
Member Reed?
Present.
Member Sadowite?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present.
I would also like to introduce and recognize our student representative from Lynn English, Julian Perdomo Guerrero. Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome. Very glad to have you here. All right, for those who are able, if you could please stand for a salute to the flag. Ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States. Justice and Justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is the minutes.
Make a motion to accept the third regular meeting on February eighth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, ayes have it. District strategic planning. Presentation.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to invite... Kim, are you, do you want to present them, our Bellwether team, or?
Our lead is here and...
Wonderful.
So, we're really excited. Let me just speak in here. Hi, everyone. I'm Molly Cohen and I'm the project lead for the district strategic planning, and we're really excited to introduce Bellwether, our Bellwether partners. Akeisha, you're going to be speaking. Okay, so, Akeisha K. Vin Howell will be speaking to you tonight about the process, and we've already started, and it's been going swimmingly, so thank you.
[inaudible]
[inaudible]
That looks like it might be the under-screen as well. I'm not sure that it is, that it's the well-toothed.
Josh is going to...
Thank God.
Thank you, Josh.
Mr. Dugan, go out though.
Yeah, no, that's too old for this stuff. You know, figure out the technology in my classroom. All these kids out there like, how do you?
There we go.
There it is. Good job, Josh.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the school committee. It is absolutely our pleasure to be with you this evening. We are excited to be partnering with Lynn Public Schools as you craft your strategic vision and plan for the next three to five years. Want to spend some time this evening just introducing our team and providing an overview of the process, as well as welcome any questions and early insights that you yourself might Again, our goals for today are just to introduce the team, and again, we just want to really make sure that we are well-aligned on the process. We'll spend about the next twenty-three weeks together, and we have a lot of work to do in that time, and certainly recognize how important your engagement is as members of the school committee. And so, really want to achieve alignment on the process and a shared understanding of our goals by the end of this time together today. Okay, Kamitra. My name is Akeisha Craven Howell. I am a partner on the Strategic Advising Team at Bellwether, and I have the pleasure of leading our project team. I come to Bellwether having spent the last sixteen years in senior leadership roles in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools. I'm currently based in Charlotte, North Carolina, in Chicago Public Schools prior to that. I'll turn to our project manager, Nicole Jackson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nicole Jackson. I am an associate partner with Bellwether. I was previously in Miami-Dade County Public Schools as the executive director of... Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I was just...
That was affirmation.
Just Miami-Dade County graduate over here, sorry.
Sorry. My last job was Miami-Dade County Public Schools as the executive director of Innovation and School Choice. Prior to that, I was in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, where I oversaw education policy and also our public-private partnerships, and I am say, I am pleasured to say that I was a middle school teacher for almost twelve years and a principal for seven years. So, really enjoyed going through your buildings today, seeing your babies, your teachers, and your staff. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Kamitra.
Good evening. My name is Kamitra Edwards, and I am a senior advisor with Bellwether, and I'm really excited to be on this project. My history and my background is that I spent the majority of my life working in schools, from the teacher level, school psychologist, principal, executive director, charter school founder. I'm not that old, I'm calm. But, my stand right before joining Bellwether was leadership development and working with school leaders across the country, helping them develop strong teams so that we can have sustainable change in schools.
So, as you can see, our team brings a wide range of experiences in lots of different kinds of education settings, but what I hope you will also see as we walk through the process, that the expertise that we really rely on is right here in Lynn Public Schools. We value so much the expertise of your central office leaders, your school leaders, your teachers, your students, your families, and community partners, and our goal is really to facilitate a process that brings all that to the surface so that we can leverage it to both craft the vision and the plan for Lynn Public Schools. We kicked off our project with your team in mid-February. Our goal is, at the end of this project, we will have cast a vision for the next five years for Lynn Public Schools, in that we will have helped you to create a strategic plan, one that both talks about like where you are today and where you want to go, and then is very clear about the things that you will differentially invest in and support on your pathway to achieving those five-year goals. Importantly, we don't just want to leave you with the strategic plan, but also with an implementation plan. A strategic plan is only as good as the tools and the systems and the structures that accompany it, to make sure on an annual basis, you're taking kind of the incremental steps that allow you to make progress to those five-year goals. And so, in terms of deliverables, at the end of the twenty-three weeks, you will have both a strategic plan as well as the implementation plan that supports bringing that plan to life and making it actionable. As we think about like how we will ground our project, we have identified a number of key questions that we want to answer throughout this process. I think you all have copies of the presentation, so I won't read through each of the questions, but I will just kind of give an overview of how we've bucketed the questions. So, this first bucket of questions is around the current state and the landscape. In order for us to define where the district wants to go, we have to have a shared understanding of where we are starting. And that is not just about the opportunities and things that need to be improved, it is also very much about the bright spots. And so, we want to surface those things that are working well, things that are emerging as best practice, so that we can replicate and build on those things. But then, we also want to be really honest about where there are opportunities for improvement, and to be clear about which of those we will take on and prioritize going forward. We have already had the benefit of a number of really insightful conversations today as Nicole and Kamitra have been in schools, as I have had one-on-one interviews with members of the central office leadership team, and as we've engaged the steering committee. So, we're already learning quite a bit about the district and the work that you're doing here. The next set of questions is around strategic vision, impact goals, and priorities. And so, if the current state tells us where we start, this set of questions will help you all to define where it is that you want to go over the course of the strategic plan. One piece of feedback that we have heard loud and clear is that the existing strategic plan is, has a very, kind of provides strong direction in terms of what are the strategic objectives, and then what are the associated initiatives. Where we have an opportunity to build on that plan and go even further is to ensure that there are measurable objectives that are aligned to those strategic priorities. And that's part of what we will want to get at here, not just articulating the impact goals that we want to have, but then what are the measures? How will we know when we have been successful? And then, what are the kind of the leading indicators? Some of these goals, these are long-range goals as we think about the places that we want to take our students, the ways in which we want our students to demonstrate success. These are not one-year goals, and many times are not two- and three-year goals. And so, you also have to have those leading indicators that give you confidence that you are making progress towards these longer-range goals. And we want to make sure that we help you to define those things as part of identifying your impact and priorities. And then, that last set of questions is really about implementation and measurement. So, you have a set of priorities, you have some objectives, but they span five years. What does year one need to look like? What are the incremental steps you're going to take each year to build toward that five-year plan? And importantly, what are the routines that you're going to have at the school committee level, at the executive leadership team level, importantly, at the school level, to look at data, to step back and say, are we doing the things that we said we were going to do? If we are, are they having the effect that we thought they were going to have? If they are, great, let's keep doing it, let's move forward. If not, let's take a step back and reassess. What might we need to do differently? Where might we need to have extra investment? So, that implementation plan and those cycles of looking at and managing with data will be incredibly important, and those are also a set of questions that we want to help you answer. We answer those questions to help Lynn Public Schools develop a theory of action. We start with the current state, that first set of questions, and then we kind of leapfrog over to the intended impact. So, once we have those bookends, then we move to kind of what's going to be that messy middle, because there's going to be a lot of iteration in the middle. There's going to be a lot of initiatives and priorities that seem really exciting, and we cannot do all things well. So, we're going to have to narrow to some high-leverage drivers of impact, and that's what we have in the middle there. So, we're going to first define where we are today, we're going to skip over and define where we want to go, and then we're going to come back and define the work that will bridge those two. And we're going to do that over twenty-three weeks, which sounds like a lot when you say the number, but it will feel like tomorrow before we all know it. We're currently in phase one, and we will be in that phase until about mid-April, and the phase one is all about understanding the current state and fleshing that out and making sure we all have an understanding of where the district is starting. As we think about this process and about phase one in particular, stakeholder engagement is incredibly important. It's one of the most important inputs to the entire process, but to phase one in particular. We really want to see the district through the eyes of the district stakeholders. Certainly, we have lenses through our prior work in urban districts, in charter systems, and in schools, but we know that there are no greater experts on Lynn Public Schools than the folks who live it every day. And so, we ground our work in stakeholder engagement. When we do that, our equity commitments that we have adopted in Bellwether are incredibly important. And so, as you look at those equity commitments, you see things like sharing power, and that's really important. We understand that in all communities, there are individuals and parts of communities who are used to having power, who are used to having agency, who are used to having their voice influence decisions, and we want to make sure in our work that we're hearing from those folks, but that we're also incredibly intentionally reaching out to folks who don't have that level of agency, and who sometimes represent the communities who need the district the most. And so, we really want to hear about from them, their experiences and their needs, and make sure that it's a part of the process. That stakeholder engagement is also cyclical. It's not one time. So, we want to hear from stakeholders, we want to come back as a leadership team, as a Bellwether team, and we want to synthesize what we heard, and we want to create options in response. And then, we want to take those options back to stakeholders and the community and say, did we hear you right? And is what we're crafting and drafting, is that, does that respond well to what you were trying to tell us your needs are? And so, it's a cycle of kind of stakeholder engagement where we go broad, we come back into a small group, and then we go back broad again. And so, you will see that kind of stakeholder engagement and input as a part of the plan that is ultimately crafted and created. There are a few groups that we will engage on a recurring basis throughout this project. The first group are a set of project leads. You see them listed there on the slide. We are really grateful for the input and time of these individuals. They are meeting with us weekly. We give them things to do in between, like reach out to stakeholders and help us to have access to school visits, and so, we really are appreciative of their time and their insights and engagement in the process. We also have a steering committee that we kicked off with today, and that steering committee is made up of folks from central office, individuals from our schools, and also community partners as well. We had a chance to spend a couple of hours with that group today, and they shared a lot of really helpful insights about the current state of the district. And so, we look forward to continuing to engage them at multiple points throughout this process. And then, finally, you, the school committee, having, understanding your priorities and making sure that your strategic oversight is well-aligned with the superintendent's strategic plan and priorities is incredibly important to us as well, and so, we look forward to opportunities to engage you and to get your insights about what you would like to see in the strategic plan as well. As I mentioned, today, we began engaging stakeholders with the steering committee kickoff today, and then also tomorrow. Our team will be in schools, and that gave us the opportunity to observe classrooms. We have had principal interviews, teacher-focused groups, student-focused groups. We'll have at least one family-focused group tomorrow, and these conversations will continue once we leave the district. We'll continue to have these remotely, but we thought it was really important to have the kickoff in person and to begin to have some of these conversations in person and build relationships. What you see on this slide is Bellwether's district and school health assessment. It has a number of components, things like academic program, district and school culture, finance, strategic planning, and this will really ground and anchor our current state assessment as we look to kind of look at the district's current practices, your data, your outcomes against a number of these dimensions and components. And so, over the next six weeks, we will continue to focus on that current state assessment. We We look forward to sharing back with the Steering Committee our findings and certainly look forward to an opportunity to share those with the school committee as well. That was a lot. I talked quickly, I realize. Welcome any questions or reactions to this process and our approach that you might have.
Member, Senator Wright, Member Castellanos, Marita.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. Can we be specific on external stakeholders? And like what the research shows, what actual stakeholders that we should be including in this process?
Yeah, and so when we talk about external stakeholders, we're, you know, we're talking about individuals who are not employees of Lynn Public Schools, are not members of the school committee. And so so far, we have already started to engage in external stakeholders. We're talking about our students and their families. We had a wide range of community partners represented on the Steering Committee today from the Boys and Girls Club to higher ed institutions, understanding that the ways in which they support the schools and the district's priorities are also incredibly important. It's important that as we engage these stakeholders, we're doing it, one, to see the districts through their eyes. So we want to understand their experiences. And two, you know, we're clear they're not playing a decision-making role. It's an input role, and we will weigh kind of their input against that of others, against that of best practices, against the data in the school system. But they are an incredibly important stakeholder.
And then just my last question that I had. I was looking at the school assessment, and I'm just curious why finance is so like far down on the list? Since we have issues with net school spending and other things that it can, you know, impact the rest? Why that's kind of so far down there?
That list is not in order.
Okay, okay, thank you for the clarification.
That school, the District and School Health Assessment, we look at all of those things in aggregate to get a full picture of the district. So the numbers don't imply an order.
Thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
Member Castellanos.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Very robust, informative. I did get the chance to read the email that was sent on the selection process. Congratulations. I, this might be a question for the district on that process, on how we vetted the consultant. Could you guys kind of elaborate on what that process looked like in terms of how we got to Bellwether? Because I love the credentials I hear, I just want to know how we got to that point? And who else was in the conversation?
Member Castellanos, we went through a very extensive RFP process. There were, I think, a total of six or seven referrals. We went through, that then entails a very lengthy evaluation process against a rubric. And at the end of the day, Bellwether was the chosen piece. And I think it was, there were two things that stood out for us. One was their equity framework in lens, and the other was their school and health assessment. And what the other piece, I think, that really was enticing for us was their, their focus on facilitating the process in a leadership way along with the district.
Okay, so can I just ask a clarification around our, I see the school committee's participation, right? I see that we play a role in the whole operation of development in this plan. Could you get more specific around that? Are we, are we able to, because when I see Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, are we able to say, listen, we don't really agree with some of the, for me, I conduct up to 15 interviews and focus group with stakeholders. I feel like that number's got to get tripled. Like, we've got to have a lot more input. I would like to see more collaboration. Like, that's key for me, right? But am I, am I able to do that part of this process? Or are we just going to be abstracting? You guys, we get information from constituents, or, you know, are we sharing with you? Can you just enhance me a little bit?
I can certainly share my instinct and would defer to Dr. Alvarez. We would love to have an opportunity to, you know, to speak with you individually and understand each of your priorities. We blew that 15 number out of the water today.
Yeah, I know, I figured.
Like, we're already past that, and we'll continue to go past that. We do as much community engagement as is needed to make sure, again, like we have shared voice, we have shared power, and that we've reached all parts of the community. You know, typically, with a school board or a school committee, we would come to you kind of at the inflection point between each phase and share with you kind of what we found, for example, in Phase One in terms of the current state. Get your reactions to that. Ask us, ask you what we missed or perhaps didn't get quite right. And then also, in Phase Two, as we begin to kind of think about the district's five-year impact and some of the priorities, that again is something that we would want the school committee's reaction to as well.
Great, thank you. Member Reed.
One and a half of my questions were asked. So just half the question that wasn't asked. As opposed to the external leaders, who are the internal leaders? Is this principals, is this a number of teachers? Can you just speak on that a little?
Yeah, so we have a number of central office leaders that span kind of elementary and secondary. We had representation from ELA, math, and the arts. In terms of principals and teachers, we had a couple of principals today and a teacher. One of our realizations coming out of the Steering Committee today is that we want much more representation on the Steering Committee from our, our teachers and our principals as well. And so we will make sure to shore that up in advance of the second Steering Committee meeting. But we will also make sure that we're engaging that voice through interviews and focus groups. So the Steering Committee is not the only way
Sure, sure.
that we're getting that representation and input.
Thank you.
Can I just touch on that just slightly? First of all, it was not intentional. We were trying to keep the size of the Steering Committee manageable while making sure that we were inclusive of many different elements, right? But when we separated into our separate groups, there was a, you know, the community partners group that went into one room, the district leadership went to another area, and the school-based staff went to another area. It was very clear to all of us there was imbalance. And so we thanked Sheila for bringing it, you know, to attention. Sheila, we know Sheila will speak her mind and her truth, and we appreciate that. And I assured her and the teacher who was present that we would revisit that and get more balance. And I had a conversation with Bellwether about that.
Awesome.
And I would say that that's not uncommon. We oftentimes will have that Steering Committee kickoff or even the first working session and say, hey, you know, like this was a really rich conversation, and I think we're missing this, this set of voices. And so we can add to the Steering Committee throughout the process. We want to be flexible and nimble and adjust to kind of what we're finding and any kind of shifts in the context.
Thank you so much.
And please keep in mind that there were staff focus groups that were happening as well.
Just the Steering Committee, yeah, sure, thank you.
Member Pena, Mayor Dugan, and Mayor Gailey.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Very informative. My question, when you go back with the, how often are you going to come back to the data? Because I know, as you said, you have a plan on where we're at, where we want to be. How often can we go back? Because sometimes we can try to have some measurable implements, and they're not going to be working. So how often can we come back to look at something? And I know it's a long-term commitment. Will you be available, you know, for that, the entire commitment? I think it's a five-year plan, you said?
We, we really invest in our partners. A lot of times, you'll hear me use "we" language and have to correct myself because I don't actually work here at Lynn Public Schools. But I say "we" because we already feel so invested in your work and in you. And so we are always available. At the end of this 23 weeks, you know, the recurring engagement might end, but we are always available for questions.
Another question I have, were your leads, your project leads, are you working with a DEI officer? Just so you could share some of your visions and your experience?
Am I, I'm sorry, am I working with?
Diversity Equity and Equality Officer?
He's on the Steering Committee, yes.
Yes, yes.
Because I didn't see.
Yes, Bobby Bishop is on the.
Bobby Bishop is on the Steering Committee.
Yes, the, the presentation does not list the members of the Steering Committee, but yes.
And parent engagement is huge, because we have a very diverse population.
Yes.
We have a big Latino population, and getting their voice and their input is very, very important.
Absolutely.
Very diverse community, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
All right, dear, great, all right. Thank you for the presentation. I guess my question would be more for maybe the administrative team. So the staff that is going to be teachers, educators, you know, people that are going to be there, are they going to be chosen, volunteers? How's that going to work? How's that going to look?
I think the natural transition for a teacher group, I have, we've gone through a process where elementary teachers and secondary teachers have volunteered
Okay.
to be on a cabinet, which meets monthly, where we discuss a number of issues. We're in the second month of that. And so it seems like part of the natural process would be to just, and I was talking to the secondary teachers today, this afternoon, that those teachers would be the group that provides feedback because they are representatives from their school. They were selected by their peers, faculty, not administrators. And so, and, and they are not necessarily also, they were not selected by L T U. L T U is a part of those groups, but it would make sense that those are the teachers that represent the voice.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you. And then our next question's from Julian, who I'm going to ask the question. So she was wondering, how are you going to engage students and families moving forward? So, which is a great, another great question.
Yes, I love that question. And, you know, when we think about a strategic plan and who we are designing for, it is for students. You are, you are who the district is serving. So we want to make sure that your voice is very much included. We started with student-focused groups today at the schools that we visited. We will have student-focused groups tomorrow at the schools that we visited. I believe that there might also be a student cabinet that we want to have the opportunity to engage and speak with as well.
I'll have a watch for Julian because she's got some good ones, so.
Member Dugan, we, we currently have 10 advisors that are grades nine through 12, and they also meet monthly. So they're also anticipating working with Bellwether.
Follow-up? You're good. Good, all right. Member Gailey.
Thank you for your presentation. I just want to go back to some things someone said about the teachers. We just came off of a period where a lot of teachers' voices were not really heard. I know that because I got the calls, and I answered those calls, concerns and issues. So I just want to make sure that those teachers are involved in this process so that, not that I'm not getting those calls, but, but that their needs are being met as well as the students. Because they're the ones in that classroom every single day with our students and can see what's successful, what is not successful. And I, I really want them to feel not intimidated. I want them to feel that they can actually express themselves and they will be heard. So I think this is really important to our teachers. So if you can make sure that happens. Then on another point, we just had someone come in here from Open Mic, at Open Mic. He is a teacher at Lynn English, and he discussed about this schedule. And I've been listening about this schedule, this is the third year now. And I think that this needs to be addressed. And if this is not like a glaring thing to this project, like address this. What is wrong? How can we fix this? So that we still can have early college, we can still have Frederick Douglass School, and we can all work together so that they're not so taxed, they're not so, so stressed. I taught in the high school, I taught in the middle school, and I don't think that I would like to stand in a cafeteria and be doing a lunch duty for an hour and a half. So I just think that we really do need to meet that. We need to figure that out. We need to take care of it in these 23 weeks so that everybody can do their job and everybody is happy in their jobs. And that's what I'm hoping for. But thank you for this presentation. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. We really enjoy our work. We look forward to working with you all and everybody involved, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, new business. We have the lease for Briar Cliff Lodge and the TEAMS program.
Thank you. In your folders, you have a lease agreement that we would want, that we need to take a vote on and would want your support. This would be an agreement between Lynn Public Schools and the City of Lynn Parks Commission. Their term there would begin July 1, 2024. There's no cost to the agreement. And this would allow us to relocate the TEAMS program that is currently housed at Lynn Tech to this facility after it's renovated. And so the ask is that the consideration and the vote is taken on the use of this actual site. Dr. Kalella is also here. If you have any questions specifically about anything that deals with our student population.
Castellanos, Member Reed, and Member Pena.
Well, this is, I think this is a probably a general, I think a lot of us got an email from a constituent around a student non-verbal. There were some concerns about the student being around the body of water. Will I get into the details? Could we kind of talk about the safety piece a little bit? Elaborate that part of, you know, identify liability? I think that was something that I saw on that email, I would like to.
So, so there, we have worked with DESI, and they did come to tour the facility and have expressed the need for very high fencing. And I think we intend to go even beyond like what is recommended. In addition, we, there's, I don't know if you're familiar with the property, but when you are like at the parking lot level, there's a place that you, we have, where we have plans to put a fence in right there so that it's like that outside of the entrance, so that there's like that block right there, so that that parking lot wouldn't be accessible. Students wouldn't be able to just walk right out there as it looks like now if you go to that entrance. So we are taking that very seriously. We, I, I say it at least probably five times every time we tour the place, tour the facility.
Yeah.
So we've talked about it a number of times. Laura Stockfish from the Inspection Services Division has been there. We've talked about the kind of fencing that needs to be used. She is very clear on that. You know, if you look behind the property, it's like a concrete like wall right now. But like, no, there is not going to be any way that anyone could climb anything, and it is going to be high, very high.
Yeah, I went, I went down, took a look before, and just, I'm glad that you said that because I was like, we really need some high fencing or something that's larger. And also the type of fencing, do we, do we have like a projected timeline on what that would look like when we would be able to accomplish that?
The fencing or the whole project?
The project and the fence. Well, I think the safety part.
So, so this is a piece, oh, this, well.
The safety will be in place.
Oh, yeah.
And it's part of the whole project. So the fencing would be part of all of the work that's being done. And it will, we have stressed non-climbable fence.
Yeah.
Like, it can't be chain-linked because that's climbable. So it has to be non-climbable.
And just, I just want to assure you that DESI has to come out and approve the project when it's completed as well. So they've already come to tour and to, you know, I'm sharing the plans with them. Anytime, you know, that we've toured the property and we've made, you know, adjustments to the plans, I share them with the representative from DESI. She's very responsive, gets right back to me, asks questions. I follow up with those questions. So we're, we're working very closely with them, and they will come and tour and make sure. But they've also stressed, you know, some of these same points that you're making.
And there's two areas that we're looking to do, like outdoor activity spaces. One is down below, like where that stone wall is. There's a nice patio area that planting, you know, beds could be, actually, there are planting beds there now, we would want them upgraded. And then up above, there's an area where the dumpster is right now that we've talked with Laura Stockfish when we were there about moving the dumpster to a different location and making that fenced in and having a safe, secure play area for students outside. And that would really, you know, focus on like a sensory playground? In addition to that, you know, In addition to that, you know, not forgetting that we are moving to the vercutta system. This would, this facility, this location would also be included within the same, would have the same locking mechanisms on the doors, safety features, no one comes in, no one goes out. And so, you know, including the cameras and everything that comes along with that system. So in this particular setting, students are almost, they're two to one, two adults to one student. And at times, three adults to one student. So the supervision, right, of the particular students that are placed there based on their IEP requires a number of adults to student ratio where they are responsible 100% of the time to be with that student. So students are not unattended at any time.
Member Reed? Yeah, I got those emails and a lot of calls and everything about that as well. So I appreciate that. And I guess another kind of logistical question. I know a lot of these kids will probably be bussing into the, is there a way, like, is it going to be fenced in when they pull in the bus or will they be releasing? I'm trying to picture it.
Yeah, so the way that we talked about the fence is that it would come across and there would be a gate in the middle that we could use to access to get in. And then, so as you, when you pull in at the different levels, there's, you know, entrance to the different floors. And so we would use probably two different like kind of stops to drop different students off to make sure that they're, you know, close to their classroom.
Yeah, I mean, thank you so much, Dr. Colella. And another concern that I got was kind of just more general and I'm sure we've all heard this one too, so I'm not introducing anything new, but just sort of around engagement in the project. A lot of parents felt that they found out through Facebook or other means. I know this letter went home to them and everything. I just hope that there are more opportunities for them, not just to hear about the project, but to just.
Nope, there certainly will be. And so I just want you to know that when it was announced here, and I think that there was, we were trying to follow a process of the school committee being made aware of it as well. Immediately the next day, I sent a communication to families and to staff and then found out that some families, we didn't have email addresses for, so they didn't receive them. So then I followed up with another communication to update email addresses for any students who didn't have that. I've sent that out via text message and we had the school advocate for families who didn't receive that. And then we followed up with a survey and I only received two pieces of feedback on the survey that I sent out and I sent that out through school messenger, so it went out in multiple languages to families. And then at this point, I think that we were still, we had some feedback from staff in terms of, you know, they went and toured and were able to give some feedback about the location and, you know, what would work best for the students there. And I think that we're now at the point where we want to involve families for feedback on some of the plans that we're putting forth.
And just keep in mind, like, everything's a process, right? The finalization of the floor plan, like, you don't want to share information that then you're going to have to come back and say, oh, never mind, we had to change this. So we wanted final floor plans. We're now, we now have the architect working on 3D rendering so that they can get a better, it's hard to look at a flat floor plan to see something that's more three-dimensional where they could get an idea of what the space would look like. So we're waiting for those to come. And the plan, Dr. Colella and I and Dr. Alvarez, we've been talking about, the next step is, you know, a staff meeting to share, you know, all the information, listen to questions, answer those questions. And for families as well, a webinar, because I'm sure it's going to be, it would be hard to do an in-person for many parents. And so we most likely will do a webinar to allow them to be able to ask questions and hear all the information about the project.
They have a monthly coffee time as well, so we're also very open to going to that and attending that.
All right, thank you, Dr. Colella. Thank you, Deb.
Member Peña?
Thank you for the clarification around some of the answers, you know, questions we had. I did get those calls and emails about safety. A question I had with the boat ramp, is that when the fencing, is it going to separate the ramp or is the ramp going to be moved at some point?
So the fencing will be closer to the building. So the boat ramp will be like kind of out of play, like the, the fencing will be closer to the building side.
So it'll separate.
Yes, it will separate it for sure, absolutely.
Yeah, and so I'm not sure what funds that we're using for that, but it's just, you know, are we going to finish the project in time?
For the renovation?
Yeah, because we have to use these funds, right?
Yes, correct. There are remaining Esra funds that were repurposed to really create an environment that was specifically designed for students that had either complex medical conditions or were considered medically fragile. The current classrooms that they're in were regular classrooms that were repurposed and were not designed for medically fragile students. Within this actual location, there are areas and rooms that are specifically for changing, for feeding, as a kitchen. There are no safety issues with students, you know, that are peers that may not be paying attention and, you know, in hallways, for example. There are a lot of situations, right, that we want to make sure that we would, that we would consider when we're talking about safety. And so those are, is there anything else you would like to add?
I think that we're very excited about the vocational cooking space. So there's like a space for the students to use with laundry and their own cooking space in addition to, you know, the kitchen where like food services will provide lunches and breakfasts out of.
And the, the area that it would be designated as well for them to be able to engage in movement time and, which they currently do not have at Lynn Tech. So that way they're able to walk, they're able to, you know, do any therapy that they need the entire time they're in school versus just, you know, either trying to coordinate a schedule with other students that are present in a location and/or, you know, inclement weather, which doesn't allow them to go outside. So they would have specifically an area where they would be able to do, engage in those activities.
Thank you, but once again, my question is, are we going to be able to finish this project in time? Because I'm familiar with the area, you know, the foundation wall, building the fence up there. You know, it's a, there's a lot of tasks behind it. Are we going to be able to finish this project?
We've been working with ISD closely to make sure that, you know, they're aware of our timelines of when we need to disperse these funds by, so. And the RFP or the bidding, it's a bidding process that they do for the, whatever contractors take on the job. They were very clear in the documentation that, you know, what the goal of the completion date would be. But I do want to caution all of us that construction, the way it is, if you've ever done remodeling in your own home, I have, what they, when they tell you six weeks, sometimes it becomes, you know, six months. So, you know, we're not going to move anything until it is ready to be inhabited, right? And so, but the goal is that it will be ready for the fall.
We cannot move it until DESI approves it.
And DESI has to approve it, correct. Thank you, Christina.
In fluctuating costs and your timeline, but the good thing advantage we have, it's not, it's vacant right now. So we can.
Correct, correct. There's no, you don't, you don't have to do second shift because students are there, which is what typically happens in our schools. Now they can do it regular shift and maybe even do a second shift, right? So, because there's no one in it. So hopefully that will expedite the process for us. And the location is already ADA compliant in all aspects of, you know, the rooms, the bathrooms, everything that is needed. So that makes it less challenging and more of a renovation versus a, you know, complete buildout.
Yeah, we actually, one piece of feedback that we got was an adjustable changing table, which is something that we took and we're actually placing in order to have now so that we can determine if this is the, you know, best thing, this is what they want to use to get a sense of that. It was, it was such an easy, easy request and something that we didn't even think of, so.
Thank you. Member Dugan?
All right, thank you, Dr. Colella, for all that. My question is just the public space and the public use of the boat ramp while school is in session. This is a space I use quite a bit personally. My dogs swim there, I use it for my kayak, things like that. So while school is in session, is the boat ramp still going to be accessible to the public?
Yes, we can't, we can't close it off.
Okay, all right.
We did ask, actually.
Yeah, no, that's why I'm asking.
But you can't, you can't. It has to remain open and it was also another reason why. We wanted the fence further up and so that that was completely separate.
All right, and so then the next comment would be communication to the neighborhoods, Slough Pond Association, those streets. That's going to be critical piece two that I'd like us to forget.
The plan is to do that as well, doctor, doctor. Ooh, Lorraine, you're a doctor now. Member Gailey and I have had many conversations. She has a plan of action, ready to go when we're ready.
I'm a member Gailey and you and I can.
We just, we need your vote to move forward with the next steps of the plan.
Yes, okay, all right, gotcha. All right, thank you. So I'll make a motion to.
Who's making the motion? We'll, we'll get back to it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Christine, I just want to go over the checklist that I have. We went in there, I went in there. And for parents, I want you to know that, that when you look at that building, it is not going to look the way it is right now. It's going to look completely different. That's why we are going to get some architectural drawings of what it's going to really look like. And then I'm going to get a packet, then I'm going to recruit my fellow school committee members and we're going to go out to the neighborhoods and we're going to give those packets and explain what's exactly happening. So all your questions should be answered and if you have any more that we need to work on, you'll help us.
Of course.
The fencing, we were very explicit about that, talked about that. We talked about the floors, we talked about the lighting, we talked about getting in touch with staff and families and then going out into the neighborhood. So that's what our plans are and I really would highly recommend this project because, oh, one last thing, I just have to clarify. When you have the parking lot that hits Lindfield Street, there's a parking lot and it's going to come up, it's going to hit the ramp and that's where the fence is going to go across. But inside that fence, I thought we might be putting some kind of sensory playground in there?
I think we decided to move it up to the top where the dumpster area was. I think that we found that better. I think that there was an issue with the grade at that area right there and it not being the appropriate place to maybe put any of those, like any structures or anything like that are sensory friendly.
Because one of the parents in the program, their child is like very, will be very happy to see a playground that her child can actually play on. And I would concur. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next question. Just a clarification question. Didn't some of the older students in this program, didn't they regularly used to go on, I guess field trips, wrong word, but they're regularly outside of the building?
That, I think that's more the life skills 18 to 22 in college. Yeah, but, you know, we do, we have co-op students who work with our preschool, the TEAMS preschool setting and that, that will obviously continue that work. And we're working with Bobby Bishop on expanding the Best Buddies Program. So that's another great opportunity.
Yeah, I think the reason I was asking, I know there's obviously concerns around the isolationism of this all, so I really urge any, you know, any people that can come in. Obviously it'd be difficult to go out, so anyone who can come in or any type of programs like that, I think we should take.
That's definitely something that we are exploring and will make happen.
Thank you, Dr. Colella.
Thank you.
Did you have another question? Okay, great. What is the will of the committee?
There's a motion on the floor.
Who, sorry, who made the motion?
Eric.
Okay, seconded?
Seconded.
All right, roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone, for all the work that's going into that. Very exciting to move forward. Lease for Greg House, Ricki.
So the next lease that you have in your documents is for Greg House through June 18th of 2024. And Deputy Rogero will discuss the reason why we need to. Yeah, so if you recall Hood School getting a second modular, correct? And if you recall, the modular wasn't ready and did not arrive in time for the opening of school. And so there were four preschools that were slated to go into that space. Requiring special ed to relocate two of the classrooms and consolidate students who were slotted for the two new classrooms within open slots throughout the city. We've been waiting for the Hood modular to be installed and good news is, it started today. Two sections, I believe, were delivered today. Another section will be delivered tomorrow and they will begin putting it together. So that's great news. This lease is because special ed has been working hard to figure out where these classrooms, these four classrooms that we needed a place for, there were two that didn't have a home. We have relocated a few of them within our schools. There was one that we didn't have any space for within our schools. And so Greg House was very gracious, right across the street from Hood School, they have their smaller Greg House facility and they had a classroom that was not being used. And so Jackie Gallo approached them, asked would they be willing to allow us to use it just for the remainder of this year? And quite honestly, if the modular gets installed and is ready to be used in the spring, we could even move them into the modular for the remainder of the year so that they are within the school. They will still be connected to Hood. It's right across the street. The, Kim and I were talking that, you know, the distance for the nurse to walk from where the nurse's office is to the modular that is currently at Hood is probably more distance than it is to go from the front door of Hood to across the street to Greg House. So it will be part of the Hood School and will be inclusive to Hood. So this is, we're asking for you to approve this so that we have a home for this classroom and these students for the remainder of this school year.
Thank you. Any questions? Member Peña?
Make a motion to accept?
Motion to move.
Second, roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
I actually see the mod.
Did you see it?
Yeah, it's on the swing.
Oh.
They had all the traffic stuff.
Thank you, Member Peña. Member Dugan, any votes taken in the policy subcommittee meeting?
Yes, we had two. The first was to accept a policy for the acceptance into the, I'm sorry, I have to, I need to do cheat notes. Thank you. Yes, the graduation requirements, so policy, I was looking for the coding IKF. So we'd need a motion to accept that for the full committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Last minute, hold on one second, I'm sorry.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, yes. So the second one is the, to accept the admission policy of the Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
And that was that.
Thank you, thank you. Communications and information.
Our last item on tonight's agenda is communication that we received from DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education regarding our net school spending and the requirements that need to be met for reconciling school year, funding year '23 and then '24. And Mr. McHugh, could you just speak to the letter and what it means for us as a school district, please?
Sure. The letter is, every year, as you're well aware, we do the end of the year report. It's really a reflection of the year that just ended and it also gives a projection for the current year we're in. So the good news is for the prior year, we were over net school spending. However, based on this school year, they're projecting that we're going to be under by $3.2 million. Since this has happened, we've met with the CFO and the mayor. They. Uh, they, I believe the city council last Tuesday night appropriated an additional one point one million dollars to the school department, which still doesn't cover the full cost. But the CFO has informed us that the health insurance cost is, he's gonna need additional three hundred thousand dollars of funds for health insurance cost for this year, which does meet net school spending, which is on the city side. They pay our health insurance cost as well as the utilities. He's gonna need four hundred thousand dollars for utilities. Uh, as, on his side, they cover those costs as well. And, um, then on the Druid School, we received a waiver for the project that's happening at Druid School, which is five hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, which still leaves a shortfall of about eight hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, uh, left to cover. Uh, what, where, what they're recommending is since we have transportation, it doesn't, uh, if you go to my budget, the only thing that doesn't count is transportation. So if you go to my budget book and look at the transportation page, we have to pay that, but it doesn't count towards net school spending because it's supposed to be refunded, a refundable amount per the state. But I've been doing this for over twenty years and they've not funded it in twenty years. So it doesn't count. So we always have a little extra funds left over at the end of the year because there's millions of dollars there and some of the costs are gonna be there. So what we would normally do is reallocate the difference of those costs towards net school spending items. Last year, if you recall, we bought a lot of computers. So if there are any funds left over, we would do that so that those computers would count towards net school spending. So that's the approach we're gonna be trying to take to close this cost, the gap on the three point two. However, if we are short at the end, when we do this end of the year report next year, we'll, we'll see how much we're short. Then that amount has to be, will be added to the following year's net school spending requirement. So that has to happen. That's the rules of the DESI in the state, that if you are short this year, they'll add that to next year's net school spending, which that has to be made up at that time. So that's the overview, that's the plan. I can answer any questions if you have any regarding that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. McHugh. I mean, I think, um, this is sort of, we've had this conversation in this, in this, uh, forum for the, the situation we're in, where, you know, we're absolutely committed to, to meeting net school spending. It, and you, and we budget with the intention to meet net school spending, but you don't know what the number is until the, the year's already gone by and then we have to play, do the catch-up thing. So that, that's a, a, a back and forth that, you know, we, we've had, um, several times here and, and a, and a constant conversation that's happening, um, between, uh, you know, uh, the, uh, public schools and the, the city team, particularly the financial, uh, folks. And, you know, we, we will continue to keep a very close eye on that. Member Gately.
So could this money, Kevin, go towards, I have been asking for four years for the staging and so has, uh, Member Castellanos for the Lynn English High School auditorium staging. And also, um, Dr. Alvarez, in her, um, interview, said she wants to change the cycle of when the curriculum, when you, we actually purchase the materials for the curriculum. So it's in the spring so that they can, teachers can actually have time to process the curriculum they're gonna teach in September rather than do it in, in August. So would this money be able to help with those two things? Because those are my, those are on my list of things that I want done.
Yes, actually, the million dollars, uh, is going to be going towards curriculum to buy all our curriculum supplies now. So, uh, I've been meeting with the curriculum director. We were just waiting for the actual transfer of funds. I know they've, I believe the city council voted Tuesday night. Once the funds are transferred into our account, the curriculum team has already been working on those costs and we were hoping to get those purchase orders probably going out within a couple of weeks.
Okay.
So that then the things will be here well before the end of the school year.
Oh, thank God. And then the other thing is the staging, that, like Lynn English High School has been without. Um, they finally got the feasibility study done. Um, I don't know where it is, maybe you do, Deb, but I just want to make sure that money is available for that staging to get done. I went to their play on Monday. They did a very good job, but it was more like a black box studio, not like an actual auditorium stage.
I believe it's in the bid process at this point. I know the fees, I would have to confirm that, but I believe it's in the bid process right now.
But these monies would take care of that.
It's already been accounted for.
No.
No.
No. No, we're only receiving one mil, little, one point one million dollars and that's gonna be going towards curriculum. So the cost of the stage would be a capital improvement cost, which wouldn't count towards net school spending unless you went for a waiver on it. So, and we don't have those funds, I don't have those funds available as of today for that.
Okay. All right, thank you. I would just like to make sure that happens.
Can you explain the waiver process that you just mentioned? What does that look like? Like if you were to do a capital improvement plan, like staging?
The superintendent would have to write a letter to the DESI and they would have to approve, like, what you're doing if they're going to allow a waiver to go towards net school spending. It's something that's an individual case by case, depending on what the need is. They could say yes, they could say no. So, um, that's.
Yeah.
You know, anything over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is considered a capital improvement project. So if it's, if anything was like under a hundred and fifty thousand, it would just be maintenance. And then maintenance counts towards net school spending, but capital improvement does not. So like the Druid School was something that we wanted to get done and back in the fall, they requested a waiver and through DESI and it took them, I think, two months to approve it, but we finally got an approval on that project. So that'll help towards the net school spending issue.
And that specifically was for the heating, right, issue? Um, that could not wait. Like it was not really a, a request that we could have students, um, waiting for. Um, we, although we haven't gotten all the bids back, I think the estimates for the Lynn English Auditorium were somewhere between six hundred and eight hundred thousand, uh, for a, um, the renovation that's needed there.
So, so just one more follow-up is just with that also, um, think about like all the, the weight rooms, the athletics. Is that something too, like if it's under one fifty, then, or if it's something that we could explore as well as renovation waivers?
Well, it depends what it is, but what, what happens is, again, as, as Mr. McHugh just shared, um, DESI, DESI is, uh, very firm on the fact that they don't want you spending, right, the funds that you receive in chapter seventy for capital improvements. And so there, that's part of the reason that they review it on an individual case by case basis. So there's no telling, right, whether, um, something like that would get approved. I mean, we obviously need to upgrade those spaces in all of our high schools.
Is there a cap on waivers?
On what waivers?
Oh, is there a cap like every year? Like, like how many times can we actually even pull that?
No, yeah, there, there, there isn't a cap. Um, the, I, I, it's a, it's a, it's a great question about the waivers and it's, it's one we've been thinking a lot about because that a hundred and fifty thousand, that number was sent, set like fifteen years ago, I think, maybe. So you think about how the costs of construction have changed over the last fifteen years. The, the number just doesn't make sense for, for, uh, the amount of needs that we have and, and the amount of money that are required to maintain, just to maintain the, the facilities. So this has been something that, uh, we've advocated for at the state level for quite some time, working with the, the delegation. Um, and they filed with legislation. Uh, we have also had a discussion with the, uh, gubernatorial administration on, um, what, what we, we see as a potentially available administrative route for, for the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education to increase that cap, the one fifty. Um, and, and that, that conversation's ongoing. We've also been joined with other, uh, been, other cities have joined in that effort. Other gateway cities who are in a, in a similar, in a similar position. So we're, we're really pushing on that. Um, and, uh, we, we, the administration has sort of signaled that they're receptive to the waivers because they recognize this, this situation that we're, that we're in. Um, and, you know, on the, on the English Auditorium, the other thing I'd say there is, I mean, we don't, we don't know yet how this is gonna play out because it's part of, part of all this is, is just the moving target of all these expenses. Um, but if, 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 if it does play out that the transportation, uh, does not encumber some of these funds that are, that are, uh, currently in the transportation line, that would free up then net school spending funds that you would, that the administration would be able to direct towards different projects. You would still potentially need a, a waiver, but, uh, in terms of avail, potentially available funds.
Thank you.
Any other questions on net school spending? Is there anything else you wanted to add to that?
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. All right, signal for the business.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.